She's cool, I guess.
They never hear.
Yeah, I'll have to like go right from there because it's early out. So but it since if we do it at the Aurora.
Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. It's Tuesday, March the seventh, twenty twenty-three, and we're starting at six o'clock, and this is our regular school board meeting. The board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we're residing on the traditional land of the Dinae people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe, supportive environment. So all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Ms. Richards, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado.
Here.
Colonel Suri.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Burnett.
Here.
Mrs. Matheson.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Hardy.
Here.
Ms. Marotti.
Here.
Mr. Doran.
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson.
Here.
Thank you. The board has a quorum. Thank you. We will now stand for our pledge, and with Ms. Barnett, please lead us. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the ESP of the Month. Rod Gray, West Valley High School Safety Assistant, will be recognized as the ESP of the Month for March twenty twenty-three. Sarah Gillum, West Valley's High School Principal, will make the presentation, and I will stay seated.
Okay, if you don't know me, I'm just a crier, so don't be alarmed if I start. Don't be alarmed when I start crying and have to briefly pause while I it'll probably start right now. Okay, good evening. I my name's Sarah Gillum, and I have the distinct pleasure of recognizing Mr. Rod Gray, West Valley High School Safety Assistant, as the ESP of the Month. For the past ten years, I've been incredibly oh, it's gonna start. Okay. Okay, okay, I'll get it out. Okay, for the past ten years, I've been incredibly fortunate to work side by side with Rod. Oh, are you gonna cry? Don't cry. At West Valley. However, he has been a member of the Wolf Pack for much longer. As a nineteen ninety-six graduate of West Valley, Rod returned to the Wolf Pack in two thousand and three as a safety assistant, right? Two thousand and three? Yep, twenty years. Okay, and has impacted thousands of lives in a positive way during that time. Rod's job title may be safety assistant, but his reach and impact on our school community extends far beyond that, and even through the infamous other duties as assigned. He is a number one problem solver, counselor, locksmith, finder of lost things, AV technician, tech support, rescuer of cars, iPhone and AirPod Finder. He is pretty much the camera guy for most of the district, I think, just about training people, and pretty much all of the things. In two thousand and seventeen, he was recognized by the graduating class with the distinguished faculty award, and at the commencement ceremony, they shared this about Rod, which I thought was fitting to reshare. Rod exceeds the duties of his job description on a daily basis, and he always does it with a smile. For many students, Rod is the first person they see walking into school every morning, and whether it is forty above or forty below, there's always a sense of sincerity to his stature as he greets you with the notorious good morning, good morning. Whether whatever task he does, whether it be opening a car door with its keys locked in it for the hundredth time, to opening a jammed locker that someone thought could fit nineteen books, four jackets, and a blanket. Rod makes no judgments on the little mistakes we make and has an immense amount of respect for every student in the school. Even when he has to take them to the principal's office, still respects them. In talking with fellow students, parents, and faculty members, it is clear that he has a staunch devotion to the betterment of all students and aiding us to grow and prosper to the full potential each of us can reach. By taking an active role in helping students mature by encouraging them to even just being there to listen, Rod has shown us that he really does care about each and every person, and his presence was crucial to where we stand as young adults today. Rod has taken to heart that leadership is action, not position, that no matter where you fit within the school community, you have the ability to make a positive difference in our lives. I also asked current staff members who've worked with Rod for many years to share their reflections, and here is what they had to say when answering, who is Rod? Rod is such a welcoming, calm, and professional staple at West Valley. He has a special knack for building relationships with students while still garnering respect. He is willing to jump in on any task and takes pride in his work. He is always sure to follow up with counselors and staff to make sure students are supported and everyone is on the same page. His hard work and ability to work with all individuals makes him a valuable asset to our school team. West Valley wouldn't be what it is without him. He always honors the dignity of students and staff. Okay, one staff member shared, I usually come in early to West Valley while Rod is unlocking doors, and on more than one occasion, Rod has unlocked my classroom door while my hands are full with student papers, laptop, etc. He also does the same thing to my office just about every day. Rod goes the extra mile and always with a smile. Rod is kind, a steady presence, and ready to lead by example. He assists students when they may not be at their best, but does not waver from his positive yet firm approach to interacting with them. He also doesn't shy away from the difficult conversations about what may be best for students. Congratulations, Rod, and know that you are so valued by many. I'm keep good. It's not done, though. I'm gonna keep going. He's the glue that holds us all together. He is persistently and consistently present for all students, especially those who need him the most. He sees people as they are without judgment and meets them where they are in life's journey. Rod's courage to show up authentically every day for students and staff make him truly indispensable. He makes us feel safe and seen because no matter how busy he is, he takes the time to get to know us, to share his expertise, to do the right thing even when it seems impossible. Rod has the uncanny ability to connect with even the most shut down, angry, and or scared students because he sees their potential, not their behavior. And he knows students better than anyone in the building. When I'm struggling with a student with students' behavior, Rod is my go-to because his insights and his instinct are invaluable. Rod is the best of who we are as a Wolf Pack, and I'm grateful every day I get to work with him. Rod is approachable and honest with kids. He has a great rapport and sense of humor. He is part of the heart of our school. At West Valley, we use the Wolf Pack way to guide our work and help us interact to be a better community. Rod embodies every single aspect of the Wolf Pack way every day, but the most impressive is his consistent, positive approach to all students regardless of the situation at hand. With every success I have had as an educator, I can trace it back to Rod. He has always inspired me with his words, sense of humor, smile, and presence, and this is the best one coming from a student who is Rod. Like wide receiver Justin Jefferson is to the Minnesota Vikings, Rod is our school's strongest teammate. Every ball that is thrown to him, he catches them all with grace and style. And as a fellow Minnesota Vikings fan, I echo all of this, especially the part about Justin Jefferson, and truly cannot think of anyone more deserving of this recognition. Rod embodies the heart and soul of West Valley. He is our son. His smile and presence are a comfort for staff and students on a daily basis. I feel so ugly lucky to work with him, laugh, and ugly cry with him, learn from him, and most importantly, call him a friend. Perhaps his most important job title, though, is with his family. So Danielle, Jaden, and Jackson, thank you so much for sharing him with us, and please join me in celebrating Rod Gray as the ESP of the Month. Now you have to shake everybody's hands. Yeah, our certificate, and then you want him to come down and shake hands, right? Do you want him to go shake hands? You get to go shake hands, and I'll meet you up there.
You have a poll.
Am I the only one that doesn't know what ESP stands for?
It is an Education Support Professional. Next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. We do a vote by consensus. Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Next up is public comment. Public comment.
You need the motion, though.
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Second.
Oh, hearing the the agenda is approved. Up next is public comment. Public comments on reports and non-agenda items are limited to two minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People who have signed up in advance through the school board office to testify in person or by Zoom will be called upon first. If their time if time remains, anyone who is in person will be invited to testify until one hour time limit has been reached. A person testifying shall state their full name, spelling their last name, and the city of their residence. Board members may ask questions for clarification. Although there is still time at the end of each meeting for the school board and chief school administrator comments, some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately as additional information may be needed to be gathered. Public comment input, ideas, and suggestions are welcome on salaries, benefits, and other contractual items regarding the Education Support Staff Association, ESSA, and the Fairbanks Education Association, FEA, negotiations. First up for public comment is Carol Cologie.
I'm Carol Cologie. Spelling of last name is C O L O G I E, and I'm from North Pole. Hello, everyone. I am addressing you tonight about the potential cuts to the Extended Learning Program, ELP, our district's gifted program. In July of twenty twenty, Dr. Gaboric signed our district's Plan of Service for Gifted Students, in effect through June twenty twenty-five. This plan designates ninety minutes per week minimum service time for ELP students in grades three through six and forty-five minutes per week for first and second graders. But the district is cutting four elementary ELP teachers, leaving only four teachers to cover all of the elementary schools in the district. Each ELP teacher will be assigned to four different schools. This means either having two schools each semester with students receiving only one semester of ELP each year, or teachers assigned to four schools every week. Either way, both arrangements will double our student caseload, cut students' service times, and double the testing workload. According to Donald Enoch, Education Administrator for the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development, DEED, the district has already violated their own service plan last fall when it reassigned ELP teachers last minute to reg ed classrooms. This caused students to be without their ELP services. Many students were without ELP the whole fall semester. Additionally, HR told us ELP teachers that we could be reassigned again this fall. Our district's twenty twenty-two standardized test scores from the Alaska STAR test show sixty-eight percent of our students are not proficient in reading, seventy-five percent are not proficient in math. Classroom teachers have a monumental task of closing this achievement gap while navigating behavior challenges and increasing increasing class size, making it extremely difficult, if not impossible, to have time to extend learning for our gifted students. In conclusion, when schools have adequate gifted programs, it signals to everyone that excellence is valued, and more students will be motivated to achieve, therefore. therefore encouraging hard work and excellence in all our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a question from the board for clarification? Ms. Matheson?
Thank you. Mrs. Cologie, can you tell me what are, what your percentage was for math?
Of students that are not proficient?
Yes, ma'am.
75%.
Mr. Dorn?
The service plan you've referenced, could you give me those states again? And that was for the state ELP plan?
Yes, sir, yes. We have a state, a plan that was submitted to the state that the district worked on and submitted. It was signed by Dr. Gaborik in 2020, and it is still in effect until 2025. And it has all the service times, and I have the attachment for all school board members. I'll provide a copy for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Marotti?
Yeah, you just answered my question. I think I was gonna ask that you email your testimony and the information that you provided to the board so that we can properly follow up with you on it.
I have copies for each of you.
You can just hand that to Mrs. Richardson, and she'll give it to the board. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Cheryl, Windex, if you'll please come forward, if you're here. And forgive me if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly.
Okay, I'm Cheryl Benedix, and it's B-E-N-E-D-I-X. And I'm from Fairbanks. Okay. I'm here to advocate for the nine library assistants that they not be cut from the budget. By cutting the assistants from the secondary schools, half of the support and work the libraries provide will not be done. All of our school libraries provide a vast array of intellectual knowledge in a world filled with technology, 24-hour internet access, social media, fake news, disinformation, and misinformation. We, as a team, help students and staff decipher and navigate all these areas in order to help them become lifelong learners of fact-based knowledge. By cutting the assistants positions, libraries will not be able to provide full service to our students or staff. West Valley alone averages 530 students walking through our doors every day. This is not always to find books. Our libraries are multimedia centers. We provide a service that goes beyond our books. Both the library and assistant provide school-wide support, collaboration with students and teachers, technology troubleshooting, engaging literacy help and knowledge, project research help, navigating online resources for facts, copyright, and plagiarism knowledge, textbooks, Chromebooks, and so much more. I personally do not think people realize how much assistance the librarian and assistant provide to our schools. Ask students and staff where they go for help, and the majority of them will say the library, whether it be for books, resource, or troubleshooting a technology issue. We provide it all. We just don't stand out in front and take the credit. We work behind the scenes providing essential help for today's learners and patrons and must remain fully staffed in order to help these students. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next, we have Samantha Christian. If you'll please come forward.
My name is Samantha Kierstein. I live in Fairbanks, Alaska. We're gonna talk about Career Education Center. Let's take money off the table and talk about successful students. If cost of educating students is gone, it's no longer a factor, then we get to look at quality and opportunities provided by good local education. I've had the privilege of building and providing space for the students of CEC since they arrived there in 1998. Soon that space grew too small for the student load, so we added to, added under our building and built the specs of the educators, a perfect spot for the CEC students. Then I watched the program grow, met the parents who were so relieved to have such quality education and opportunity for a diploma, not a GED, for their students. There was an unexpected benefit of having some of these students who were required to do community service for court cases work at the food bank, too. Life could have been different for them, but they made it through the tough times. They were worth the investment when we made it in 1998, and they're still worth the investment today. I have personally been through three head teachers since 1998, all with the same mission in mind, and all have produced amazing results with their students. I simply cannot look at this program without great appreciation for the forward-thinking of these educators for these very special students. What if we all had just stopped at it costs too much? Last year, I told you I would pay the rent with my personal salary. That's how little this program cost in this space. This year, I will tell you that the mission of the Fairbanks Community Food Bank is that no one go hungry in the Tannenaw Valley. And, yikes. And that includes these students, too. The food bank was started with a terrible business plan. We receive free food, and we give it away free, and we've been doing that for 40 years. We're glad to add that we built a place for these students, and they came, and they succeeded, and we are willing to continue our investment in them. If this school district cannot afford this high-quality program in this space, we can, and we will. We, just one, one more minute.
Go ahead.
One more second. We know how valuable CEC is in our community. We're very thankful that we have been part of their lives, and we're willing to continue to pay their rent for another year. Last year, this program was supported by CARES funds. This year, we will continue, we hope it'll be, continue to be supported by We Care funds. Money will not be a deciding factor in this discussion about these people.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there any, we have a question from Ms. Hardy?
It's not so much a question, and I'm a crier, too, Ms. Gillum. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you for coming today. Can you please send your testimony to the whole school board for us, please? That'd be amazing, and I thank you so much for coming today.
It's my, my joy to be able to do it. It's a very sincere offer, and I hope you'll think about it.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Dorn?
Thanks for coming tonight and for all your work with the food bank over the years and our community in a lot of different areas. You talked, since you were there at the beginning of CEC coming over there. Could you just go back for a minute to why it was so important for the food bank to build a special area for CEC? What that meant to food bank to do that?
Well, actually, I was trapped into it. A very nice teacher came over and said, you know, we, we're having trouble. I think it was, I don't know, Fairbanks, I don't know what the school was before. But they needed some space, and they proposed that they put their 100 at-risk students into the building that we just built. And I'm thinking, oh, my goodness, this is a brand-new building. I love it. I'm in my, finally in a good food bank. And I really didn't think it was a very good idea. But it didn't take me long to understand who these students are and how wonderful the, the work is that they can do and how useful they are in the community. And so when they came to me and said, you know, our program is growing, and we need to expand, it was easy at that point for us to say, okay, we'll do whatever we need to do because we think this program is gonna, is very successful in our community.
I could do a follow-up?
Yes, go ahead.
And could you give, just share your perspective on the importance of CEC being in that neighborhood?
Well, we have students from rescue mission and from the domestic violence shelter, from homes in the area. It's geographically a good spot, and, and certainly, we, we use them also in the food bank. We're glad to have them. It's just been a good fit, and they get to see all of the services that they have available to them as they go through their various traumatic situations. And, and sometimes it's, it's, people need to see trauma, too. And so it just has a lot of social benefits as well as educational benefits. We've been blessed by having three wonderful head teachers since I've been watching, plus, of course, all of the other auxiliary staff.
Great, thank you, and thank you for your offer tonight.
Ms. Smith?
First off, I'd just like to thank you for coming in tonight. I really appreciate it. I just want, I know it's not a question, sorry. I just wanted to say thank you so much for what you're doing there. I know, I personally know many kids who would not be on a graduation path if it wasn't for CEC right now. And like I said, I just wanted to thank you for what you guys are doing.
Ms. Marotti?
I'm not gonna be able to say this without crying, but I wanna break the rules as well and thank you for this generous offer.
Stop it, don't make me cry.
No, I can't.
All this crying tonight.
I, I'm, I'm so grateful because someone asked me yesterday to consider asking you to do this, and without asking, you came forward and offered. And I know, because I'm in your field, I know that what you're struggling with with this nap benefits crisis right now. And so this just means even more.
Yeah, it's a very serious time.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Kristen, thank you so much for your testimony tonight. Next, we have Ms. Sandy Ryan.
Thank you for bringing me up here right after everybody cried.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Ryan, R-Y-A-N, and I have the pleasure of teaching mathematics and computer science here in Fairbanks for almost 30 years, and I currently serve as the Fairbanks Education Association President. As I'm sure that you guys are aware, the district has passed, the district and FEA has passed another milestone in negotiations. We completed mediation on the first. Unfortunately, no articles were signed, not a single one. Not the article that would say that we need to have a negotiated agreement in everybody's hands to print that's in the unit, not the, not the agreement that would say we respect all the work our itinerant teachers do and just have a parking space so they can get to job on time, not the article that says that we value what our coaches and activities and, and our clubs do after school for our community and for our students by giving them a raise in their hourly rate or X-factor that is equal to maybe what their high school students are making at Starbucks or McDonald's. Ladies and gentlemen, we have 20 open articles, 20. Articles, if we can't decide how to settle articles on classroom safety and grade determination, it's going to be very, very hard to get the rest of the articles settled as well. I will, I will repeat something that I've said before, I think, sitting here, that the lion's share of the work should have been done by now. We should be working as a team. We should be arm-in-arm, and we should be going to all sources that can furnish revenue for our students. We should be talking to one another about how to work together. What's most important is that we owe our students the best education that we can, and you guys need to deliver it. That's your job, is to help us get there. Let us work together, hand in hand, arm-in-arm, to go to every single source, don't leave a rock unturned, to make sure that we have everybody believing that education is a priority today. We need to fund, and we need to fully fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Next on our agenda is the Borough Assembly Report by, I'm sorry, is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time and testify?
Hi, my name is Morgan Simpson, and I'm an ELP teacher. I'm here today to advocate for the ELP program. Thank you in advance for considering this testimony. Students qualify for the ELP program by testing in the top 90 to 95% of our students in math, reading, writing, nonverbal reasoning, and/or creativity. Many people seem to hold the opinion those students will be okay. This is the most highly capable group of our students. Why on earth would we want to purposefully set up a system that's created for them to be okay when their abilities really are outstanding? And also, ELP students struggle as well. They tend to get along better with adults than their peers. They can develop asynchronously, being far ahead in some areas while being behind in others, such as social skills. They can lose interest in school if they're not challenged or motivated. They can tend towards perfectionism and become frustrated when high standards are not met, and they may also have self-esteem issues, high anxiety, emotional and sensory sensitivity, and problems with attention and organization. ELP is where they can find their people. And the ELP program has a class that is tailored for their specific and individual needs. Sorry, I'm so nervous talking to you guys today. Did you know that ELP students are also at a higher risk for dropping out of school? They tend to learn quickly, and then they have to wait a lot for the other students to catch up. And the ELP program is an opportunity to have a class where they don't have to wait, where they can work with their like-minded peers or with peers that are exceptional in ways that are complementary to their own abilities. They have the opportunity to explore projects of choice. The class is based on their strengths and interests and moves quickly. They have a chance to learn from each other. What if, instead of making them wait, we give them the chance to stretch their wings? These are the top 5 to 10% of our students. These are the ones who will become our future leaders, doctors, engineers, attorneys, scientists, and they will excel. They have the choice. They may not choose to become a doctor, but they are so highly capable of doing anything that they set their minds to. Please don't limit them by cutting the ELP program as proposed in the budget.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for your time.
There is a question for clarification from the board, from Ms. Matheson?
Thank you so much, Mrs. Simpson. Can you email us all of that information? And have you expressed this to our state legislators and our local government?
I haven't yet to the legislators, but I did email it to the school board earlier today.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and testify? Come forward and state your name, spelling your last name.
My name is Roxanna Momeni, M-O-M-E-N-I. And I'm here to testify about the ELP program. I am a mother of a student in the third grade who recently enrolled in the program. And I'm also a mother of a 23-year-old son who was in gifted program throughout his academic career. And it was the gifted program that saved him from potentially dropping out of school. It was the gifted program that showed him what he could do if he stayed in school and finished school. And it was the gifted program that, I believe, gave him hope for his future. He was always bored in school. It was much too easy. He had an IQ, he has an IQ of 148. And he was reading 800-page books when he was six years old. And his teachers all thought he knew nothing because he wouldn't produce, he wouldn't do his work. But he'd go in the gifted program, and it was like he was a totally different kid. And he had social skill deficits. I guess you would say he might be on the spectrum. And in that program, he was able to make friends, actually lifelong friends that he's still friends with. And it gave him a community that he could feel like he was a part of. And I'm really disappointed to know that my younger son, who's nine, may not have that opportunity. And I, myself, was also in a gifted program, as well as my sister. And I feel like it gave us an opportunity to overcome our poverty that we were in, and that it's also really great for kids that may be not able to access enrichment classes due to not having that money source.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else come forward to testify at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public testimony. Thank you. Now, next on our agenda is the report from the Borough Assembly. Mr. Brett Roddeman, if you'll come forward. If you'll come forward please and share your report with the board. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Brett Roderman and I'm the newly-elected Assembly member. So if there's any questions, please take that into account. Don't pick on me too hard. And sitting here tonight, I'm really glad I got elected to Borough Assembly instead of School Board because I'm a bit of a crier myself. And so, but anyway, I wish I had a great report for you guys. But honestly, you know, being new to the Assembly, I'm just kind of diving into things. And I'm sure what's on all of your guys' minds is budgets. And we are just now diving into the budget. So honestly, the only thing that we've gone through so far is, believe it or not, we started with ours, the Assembly, and the clerks. So, you know, I really don't, I don't have much to report. On a personal note, my wife, Dani Shepherd, will be taking over as the faculty liaison to the new North Star College. She will be taking over that position in mid-May, I believe that begins. So anyway, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer. Like I say, I wish I had something earth-shattering to tell you, but...
Thank you for your report.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we move on to President's Report. And I will get there where I attach my report and I won't be reading it, but I'll read it tonight. I did the D O D A grant training for two days, bless you. And it was very informative to be able to sit in a room full of coordinators from all over the Northwest to hear their emphasis on the grants that they have provided for their schools. It was really eye-opening. So I just was privileged to hear that and see the presentation from their coordinator, I guess, out of DC or Washington. And I would like to thank Brett Jamison, Desiree Baum, Rebecca Herbie, Ellis Ott, Georgia Vena Sungren, Sarah Robinson, Chad Bean, and Ms. Lori Bean. It was, oh, and Colonel Suri was there also. So it was very informative. Then Saturday, I was able to spend time with students at the Spelling Bee, which was a first for me. And our students did a wonderful job there. So thanks, Michelle Damo and Flor Roddy. The finalization of our ad hoc committee to work on resolutions and kind of focuses will be to make them more about our community and our students. Also got the results for our board development and recommendations, and I've sent that, shared that with the board. The ad hoc committee for our contract, they are finished that work and we will meet to discuss that. And then on the 21st of agenda, then that contract negotiations will be on and we will finalize that for the superintendent position. I've also given the A A S B, or will be given the A A S B digital to each board member. And we will be able to focus on our board work. And then I wanted to have each board member look at that, be able to teach each other and go through that work plan so that we can finalize ourselves with that handbook and just come up, you know, work on our own development as a board. That's it, I think. I don't think I have anything else. Ms. Moline, do you have... Oh, yes. Go ahead, Ms. Marotti, you have a question for me?
I think I have two, actually.
Okay.
Can you, you said that there's an ad hoc committee for resolutions. Did you form that ad hoc committee or are you just saying that there's going to be one?
No, I formed it.
Can you tell us who's on that ad hoc committee?
Ms. Hardy is the chair, Ms. Smith, Mrs. Smith, and Ms. Burnett.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know. I'm sorry.
Okay.
And then can you tell me, can you give us an update on the Legislative Committee going to Juneau?
Oh, thank you for that. So Legislative Committee, Ms. Smith and myself will travel to Juneau on the 12th through the 15th. And Mr. John Ringstead, our legislative lobbyist, is making appointments and to meet with them and be able to share our legislative priorities and other conversations that will set up appointments for those times. And then the rest of the board also will probably be making those same arrangements and we'll, I'll send you our email out about more information. Anything else for me? Right, we move on now to Ms. Moline's report.
Thank you, President Sanderson. I was going to begin my report by saying, just a few blocks from here, a group of middle school and high school students are preparing for a band concert, but that's not happening. We had a sprinkler system break at Lathrop High School this afternoon and that had to be repaired. And because the repairs that were needed to be made, no one could be in the building. So we will be rescheduling the band concerts for music in our schools for a later time. So that, that isn't happening now, but it will be happening. Next, I'd like to just give a little transportation update. Starting on February 27th, we were able to reestablish 11 routes to our, to our bus transportation system in an effort to provide reliable and consistent services to our families. So that's, that's an encouraging thing happening. There, many of you may have seen, or if you haven't yet, I encourage you to watch for a, the calendar and school start time survey that's gone out. It's open right now until the end of, until the end of spring break. And the purpose of this survey is to, to serve as kind of a pulse check on how things are going for families regarding start times. It's been a couple of years since we established those start times. And so we, we thought it would be just time to see how it's going for families. So that's the main purpose, along with the, some of the calendar changes, getting feedback and feelings, thoughts on how people are thinking about possible calendar adjustments for the future. And finally, I'd like to just make everyone aware of the advocacy video that is available now. If you haven't seen it, you can go to our website or to our YouTube channel and, and watch, watch the video that's encouraging families to participate, community members to participate in the advocacy process for public school funding. I, I would also like to just once again say a deep, deep appreciation to Josh Duval, who is our Director of Communications, and Rebecca Herbie, who serves as the Executive Director for Communications Development and Engagement. I'd like to recognize the video star, Ms. Olivia Smith. She'll be signing autographs following the meeting. And Ms. Anderson will be available for autographs as well. But this project far exceeded any expectations that I had. The professionalism, the, the message is clear. It highlights the great things that are happening in our district and it highlights the students that are in our district doing those things. So if you haven't seen it, I encourage you to watch it. And then even more so, I encourage you to, to be engaged, get involved. There's information at the end of the video that can tell you how you can do that. So I just, I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to see that and like and share it so it can go out to a larger audience. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Burnett.
Not really a question, just a comment. I would like to back up Mrs. Moline's comments and just say how appreciative and how amazing that video turned out. So grateful, so thankful. You know, when a lot of people want to be very negative right now, it was really awesome to see what a positive, positive turn that we were able to put in that video and just showcase how amazing our students are, our schools, our staff, and everything about it. So just thank you so much. That's exactly, exactly what we wanted. Thank you.
Next on our agenda are action items and unfinished business. Is there a motion or second on this one?
Move to approve the second reading, public hearing, and advancement to vote of policy 991, controversial issues.
Second.
Is there any public discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll close. Is there any board discussion on this item? Ms. Marotti.
Thank you. Due to some miscommunication at the last one, I move to amend policy 911, controversial issues, by deleting the first paragraph as written. I'm replacing it with, "A controversial issue exists for the purpose of this policy if it is a public dispute concerning a matter of opinion, discussion of topics that results in a dispute or disagreement due to a difference of opinion." As well as, I would like to, in the third paragraph, add the words "research-based" before the word "training."
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there a discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Marotti.
Again, that was, it was miscommunicated what needed to be in the wording for this round from the last meeting. And I apologize for misstating it. It was in the email, but the words that came out of my mouth were different. So I appreciate everyone's patience and, and hope that this can be corrected.
Any other further discussion on it? Mrs. Smith? Yes. The amendment. Yes. All right, thank you. At this time, we'll take the vote. Ms. Richardson?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Oh, and now we're back on, the main motion is amended. And could you please, yes, Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I would like to move to amend the emotion to change the word bias to facts. And then, after the word opinion, comma, identify bias, comma. And then I would also like to reinstate the free of partisanship and censorship, which is removed.
Second.
And is there a discussion on that? Ms. Marotti?
While I appreciate Mrs. Smith's intent, I'm wondering if this is legal because the amendment, the policy wording was already moved at the last meeting. Amendment was just made and passed, and now we're going back to the original wording that was already moved and passed. I don't think this is a legal request because it's already been voted on.
You can amend any motion.
Well, the thing that you can do is we can vote this up or down and then change the language either by substitution or deletion. Mrs. Smith?
I appreciate that comment, Ms. Anderson, but that's not what's being asked here. Ms. Marotti is, says that we cannot amend the motion or the language of that policy that we have put forward, correct?
Do you have a clarification, Ms. Marotti?
Sure. At the last meeting, we already amended and moved and passed the wording of this policy from a, from an original wording. At this meeting, we just amended that wording again to different wording. And now your motion is to amend it back to what it was originally, even though that wording was already amended, moved, and passed. If it was different wording, then we could then vote on it. But because it's the same wording as it was originally that was already moved and passed, then it's an illegal motion.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. It's really important to me to include the evaluate facts in this language and also to include free of partisanship and censorship. And it's my belief that in the second reading, anything about the information put forward can be amended. And I would be interested in postponing until a, an actual person who can parliamentarian us on that can let us know what that is.
So are you putting a motion to table this?
Well, can we phone a friend? Can we ask a parliamentarian during this meeting? I don't think we need to table it. I just want that parliamentary question. So can we table it to a time definite of after we finish the rest of our action items or after we finish the rest of our agenda?
That sounds like we can do that, yes. Ms. Richardson, would you call for the vote, please?
Vote to ta, this would be a vote to table to...
Until the end of our business, if I understand correctly. Okay. For clarification.
Is there a second? No, table doesn't need a second.
Ms. Richardson, would you please call for the vote on this matter?
Yes. Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
No.
Mr. Doran?
No.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Richardson, could you make that phone call for the clarification? Thank you. Next on our agenda is an action item, new business. May I have the motion, please?
I can do it. Move to approve resolution 23-21, recognizing the month of the military child. Second.
Thank you. Resolution 2023, 2021, 2023-21 recognizes April 2023 as the month of the military child. Throughout the district, and encourages of staff, students, parents, community members, and district community, and military leaders to observe the month with celebration lessons, guests, speakers, and other activities that humor, that honor, support, and thank our military children and the families who care for them. Colonel Alvarez, would you please read the resolution? Alvarado?
Excuse me, Colonel Suri is going to read the resolution. Thank you.
Okay. One of our colonels will be reading the resolution.
We're interchangeable. He's better.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the opportunity. This means a lot to me on a very personal level, as long with, along with all the rest of the military members who've ever served. So I'll read the resolution. It says, as you said, resolution 2023-21, recognizing month of military child. Whereas first proclaimed in 1986, April is a month in military child. An opportunity to pay tribute and recognize the contributions, sacrifices, and unique struggles children of military service members selflessly make in support of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas recognizing when a parent or guardian serves in the military, their children are also serving, it is important to honor and celebrate our military's youngest heroes. And whereas the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District is proud to serve children whose parents and guardians serve in the military and are stationed on military installations within the Fairbanks North Star Borough. And whereas by ensuring military children are safe and supported in our schools and community, our men and women in uniform can focus on the challenges and missions they face in the line of duty. And whereas acknowledging the role the district plays in providing an excellent equitable education and a safe, supportive environment, so military and all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society from anywhere in the world. And whereas the physical, social, and emotional well-being of children in the military families is essential to their success, and the month of military child is an opportunity to remember children's roles in strengthening the military family. And strong, resilient military children are essential to the success of the military's mission. And whereas in support of military children and youth is highly encouraged for schools and the community to participate and purple up for military kids on April 14, 2023, to show support and thank military children for their strength and sacrifices. And whereas military children and youth are a source of pride and honor, it is only fitting that we take the time to recognize their contributions, celebrate their spirit, and let our men and women in uniform know that while they are taking care of us, we are taking care of their children and youth. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education designates April 20, or April 2023 as the month of the military child. Throughout the district, and encourages staff, students, parents, community members, and district, community, and military leaders to observe the month with celebrations, lessons, guest speakers, and other activities that honor, support, and thank our military children and the family members who care for them.
Is there any public comment on this resolution?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Janet Ferris, F-A-R-R-I-S. I'm from North Pole, and I am the Fort Wainwright School Liaison Officer.
I am Ernest Kincaid, K-I-N-C-A-D-E, and I am the House of School Liaison Officer.
We would like to thank the school district for recognizing month of the military child. This recognition is so very important because many do not realize that military-connected children move on the average of every two to three years during their school careers. They have learned to blend into each school they attend. This is how they cope. But by the time they build strong relationships, it is time to move again. Then, there are deployments, field work, trainings, et cetera, for the military family member to attend. These students often have their loved ones working away from home. Resiliency is much needed for military-connected children. Many times, being a military-connected student is not at the forefront of their school careers, but it does play a factor in their social and emotional well-being, as well as how they learn. This school district has done an outstanding job in letting the military-connected students know they matter and are part of the school district family. For the school district's support for military-connected students, we are forever grateful for the wonderful memories given to these students. Thank you.
I don't know how I'm going to follow that, but...
Bring the, bring the mic close to your face.
So every year, we try to up the ante with the month of the military child. So this year, we're actually going to have a program down at Pioneer Park on the 15th of April, and it's celebrating the month of the military child in this, called A Day in the Life of a Military Child. So the community is invited. It's going to be a packed show. We have military demonstrations, military working dogs, some of the military career fields will be there as well. So if we're lucky, we actually have a couple of pilots out there as well. So it's for the whole community. It's celebrating military child, but like she said, we feel like we're part of the community, and we invite the community to come celebrate the military child.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Mrs. Smith?
Hi, thank you for coming in. I'm just wondering what time the thing at Pioneer Park is on the 15th?
Is from 11 to 3? 11 to 3 on the 15th.
Thank you.
And if any of you would like to have a booth and participate as, with, as a vendor, it's free. Please let us know.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Oh, Colonel Suri?
Yeah, I'll just make a few comments. So as you know, the All Volunteer Force, we've had that for quite some time since Vietnam, when we ended the draft. And the military communities that serve our installations like this one are absolutely paramount in maintaining the strength of our force. Why, I don't have the statistic in front of me, but I know it's very high that the majority of our soldiers come from military families. I mean, that, and that is absolutely key to keep our, our force as strong as it is. So the fact that, I think it's 10 of our schools out of 21 in the state of Alaska that are Purple Star schools are in this district, I mean, that, that fact states a lot, stands alone. So the, the thanks that I have is, you know, words don't describe it. Our, our community loves it here, and they tell me that all the time. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Colonel Suri. Any comments from the board? Ms. Hardy?
Yeah, I just want to speak, my children are military-connected children, both active duty and now guard, and it means a lot to know that they're recognized and welcomed. And also, as a teacher at Tannenall, we've done, or when I was, really great things for the students there, and I've loved that our Fairbanks community makes the effort to make sure that our service members' childrens are seen, because sometimes they disappear, and appreciated and shown that extra care.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Richardson, would you call for the vote, please?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of Public Health Nurses Group of Sex Education Public Speakers. Have a motion.
Move to approve Fairbanks Public Health Centers' trained staff as a group to use district authorized presentations and lessons to have previously received board approval.
Public health nurses being approved as a group to use presentations and lessons that have previously received board approval.
So second on the motion.
Second?
Oh, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any comment from the board? Any public comment on this issue? Seeing none. Mr. Doran?
Just really want to say thank you to the administration for bringing this forward. I think it helps everyone in the whole process.
Ms. Richardson, would you please, okay, go, sir, would you please come? If you'll come to the podium? Yes, sir, if you'll just state your name, esp, your last name, and give us your residence.
My name is Dennis Cardon, and I live in Fairbanks.
Thank you, sir.
I don't, I don't fully understand what you're talking about here. I guess I have some missing information. Your, your, your motion is to, say it again. Would you tell me again?
Move to approve the Fairbanks Public Health Center trained staff as a group to use district authorized presentations and lessons that have previously received board approval.
Okay. So we're not discussing the, the stuff that's been previously approved?
No, sir.
Just the nurses?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How would I find that out?
Well, we always print our agenda in the paper, and it's always, things are posted on our public, on the website.
Well, I'm talking about the material that they're going to be teaching.
So the curriculum has been approved, and you could talk with our director, Mr. Chat, Bean, and he would be able to share information with you.
Okay.
But our curriculum is approved. We have different things that comes before the board that our board approved.
Right. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And you can find that on our website as well.
Yes. So I need a vote on this. Ms. Richardson, would you please call for the vote? Or Mrs. Smith, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just thought it might be helpful to the person who testified to just say that public health nurses are approved to present the material that was previously approved, but they were approved by name of an individual before. And now we're just approving that any public health nurse who is trained and working at public health can come, instead of naming them. Because right now, there are just a few people named, and a lot of those people don't work there anymore. And so we're saying anybody who's filling that position can be the one to present the material. That's the only thing that we're changing, is that more we're approving the position of public health nurse instead of the name of the person.
Thank you for that clarification. Now I'll call for the vote.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Do we have a ruling on the...
We're waiting for an answer from C. Doras' office. They're working on it.
We'll continue to move on. This is the information and reports, and we will have Colonel Alvarez, Alvarado, to give us an update on the Ileson State of Affairs.
Ms. Card, do you have the slides? No, I sent them, I emailed them. I should put them up there. I'm just hoping they can present it because I think it's helpful to see on the screen. Oh, no, I'd need them on the screen. I can...
Let's see, she's already called somebody.
All right, I'm sorry for that awkward pause, and I should have made up a joke at the time. Well, first and foremost, thanks for having me, and thanks for letting me talk in front of you folks today. My name is Colonel Tony Alvarado. I go by Pumba. That's actually my call sign for like 20 some years. It's scary, and I'll have to tell you offline. But the bottom line is, I'm the Mission Support Group Commander for Ileson Air Force Base. For Army folks, it's, you know, a lot, it's very Garrison-ish. But the whole point is, a while back, we started recognizing there's a lot of change going on at Ileson Air Force Base, and we're going to probably need some help in the future. But then, as I started talking to more and more folks of the community...
Excuse me. Can you hold your mic up?
Sure.
Thank you.
Colonel Alvarado, if you, if you want, you could take the podium here, and we can do your slides. That way, you won't be in the shadows.
Okay.
This is only getting more awkward.
Just sit, sit. No, sir.
And then, yeah, if you could also tell me when to advance the slide.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Can you guys hear me okay? God, now this better be good, because now this, I've never really drawn this out here. Okay, so like I said, my name's Colonel Pumba Alvarado, and as we're, we have a lot of folks and a lot of things happening at Ileson Air Force Base, and it's gonna, and more and more is happening. And I started realizing, talking to folks in the community, whether I work with the mayor's office, or whether I work with folks in the school district, I started realizing that people think, hey, Air Force, you're still around? Are you really staying this time? So it actually came to, came to, came to reason that, as talking to the staff, that I probably want to give you guys a quick update on what's happening with Ileson Air Force Base, where we're going, letting you know up, bad news up front, that you're not losing us, you're, you've got us forever now, whether you like it or not. And then we were probably going to need a little bit of help from the schools. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and break into it. Next slide, please. So a little bit of history, if you take a look, that's Ben Ileson. And one of the biggest reasons you're not going to lose this, it happens to be not because you guys are just wonderful people, but because the geography is absolutely important. For most people, and they recognized it quite a while back, that Alaska is extremely important because we are in a perfect position on the globe to get at things that we want to get at to very quickly. We're within 4,000 miles of the Kremlin, 4,000 miles of Shanghai. So bottom line, anywhere that we think we have to respond to our nation's defense, we can get there fairly quickly, and Ileson is going to be integral to that as time goes on. So again, that map is really, I, that's not the way I learned geography, but if you take a look, in pretty much anywhere you need to go, we need to be, we're about 4,000 miles away, and we can get there very quickly. So if we scroll down a little bit more. All right, so basically, we get our marching orders for the national defense, and I think everybody's aware of that national, that national instrument. So the bottom line is the, is the national defense is the central strategy to U.S. prosperity and security, and our job is to make sure that we have defending the homeland, maintaining the balances of power, which again is at strategic level, but we do it tactically, as well as defending U.S. allies, bolstering partners, and then ensuring the common domains remain open and free. That is a big picture, what we are responsible for. That's what the nation has given us to do, and I'm going to talk about how we do it at Ileson. So we can scroll down a little bit. Another major factor as well is we've talked about the Arctic Strategy. So for a long time, we talked about being in Alaska, we were here to deter the Russians. But in actuality, the Arctic Strategy, while the Russians know, they're very aware that we're here, the fact of the matter is, we have other nations starting to get into the Arctic, to include China. So a lot of what we're going to be doing, what we're going to be training for and posturing for, is... So a lot of what we're going to be doing, what we're going to be training for and posturing for is in response to this Arctic Strategy. So again, these are all things that we're having to take into account. And again, when you see us 20 some miles away, this is what's foremost on our minds and we're training for. So if we scroll down a little bit more. So our wing mission, why do we exist in the 354th Fighter Wing? Well, our job is to provide the U.S. Indo-PACOM Combat Ready Fifth Generation Power. So fifth generation, that's the F-35s, that's the F-22s. That is the next generation and that's the stuff that we need to get together to make sure we are ready to answer our nation's call. And we have to do it through integrated training and providing strategic Arctic Air Power basing. And the vision, we provide fifth generation power. So for the longest time, anybody familiar with the Air Force, we did our premier air training at Nellis Air Force Base in the different parts. But the reality is based on the space, based on our proximity of what we can accomplish, we can accomplish unrivaled training here in Alaska. So not only can we do the best training here, but again, like I mentioned earlier with the globe, we have that ability to project really far. And again, what I keep saying is you're not losing us, you're not getting rid of us. These are all the reasons I'm telling you. So if you slide down a little bit. So just to give you an idea of where we're looking at Ison Air Force Base, so we're looking at about 3,000 people, so we service about 7,000, 8,000 people. But within the, based on strategic decisions that have occurred in the last few, past year and a half, we are going to climb in the next three to four years, and bless you, we're going to climb 350 folks from a Civ Mil perspective and they're going to bring about 500 extra folks with them. So we're looking in the next three to four years of getting up almost not, a little short of 1,000 extra people, which definitely means that's a function of, we're going to need more power, we're going to need more stuff, we're going to need houses, we're working closely with Mayor Ward and Mayor Welch and his team and their teams. So the bottom line is we are growing and we're going to be a lot more a community. Good thing is we bring money to the community and we know we all need that. And we're happy to do it, you know, again, wonderful community. So if we slide a little bit more. I'm sorry, my back's to you folks. I feel like I'm being disrespectful, by the way.
You're fine, Colonel. You're fine.
So, really quickly, for those that have not been in Ison in a little bit, we have an enormous runway and a runway that we can do a ton on. But we have our own power supply. We have, if you take a look over here, we have between power. We have a joint mobility center, which is how we get airplanes in and then we get them out very quickly. We have an operational requirement to, with very little notice, turn around and send a bunch of airplanes, we'll just say somewhere in the world, very quickly. And all that has to happen from Ison. So you are catching us at a point of growth and a point of transformation. And we don't have enough people to do it. We don't have the equipment, which is why you're going to watch Ison getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Rooms and 14,500 feet, that's one of the second, one of the largest runways that we have in the DOD itself. Some of our partners, we've got the guard with the 168 tankers. We've also got a rescue squadron that is on standby. We actually have some folks that do scientific stuff. They're smart people. I've never met them, but I know they're out there, so I hear. And then after that, we have the rescue training squadron as well. So there's a lot, folks that have to do Arctic Survival. What better place to do it than up here at Fairbanks? So these are some of the folks we get to work with. Next slide. Delivering combat capability. We talked about that. Of the many, many, many things we do, this is what should be keeping enemies awake at night. We have some of the best trained officers enlisted you're ever going to find and the ability to wage combat capability at a moment's notice is something we're very proud of. But we have a long way to go. We are not there yet. There's a lot of growth that has to happen. We've got the airplanes, but we need the apparatus to do that and that takes lots and lots and lots of people, whether they're military, officers, enlisted civilians, we need all those folks. But again, they come with families. Next slide. Turn it around just for a second. All right, so all I'm demonstrating here is back in the day when I grew up, we used, we, we used to fly sorties. You know, I was a flyer for 20 some years. We used to fly, you know, in the Nellis ranges where we had some of the most sophisticated threat replicators. That has gone by the wayside unfortunately. And Ison, right here, the J Park, is something that we're actually sharing with the Army brothers and sisters as well, replicates some of the highest end threats you can possibly get. So when our nation says, hey, be ready for our next threat, you know, that rhymes with China. We're going to be ready to go and it's happening here. That just shows you how big and how awesome and how much more capability we have in this to grow. Next slide. Training and integrating. So you guys have probably all heard about, everybody knows the movie Top Gun, great, huh, it's great. However, from an Air Force perspective, you know, we have red flag, we have weapon school, we have things like that. And this is where the next high-end training is going to happen. It's already happening, but as money pours in and we start focusing, well, now that we've left Afghanistan after 20 years, now the focus is going to be on what's happening in the U.S. Indo-PACOM area specifically with China. So that training is going to continue. And again, we're very fortunate if you still lie down. It's not only training U.S. Air Force pilots, it's actually training with, training with our joint brothers and sisters as well as our partner nations, the British, the Australians. Just a ton of folks that come in. We have several exercises every year and so you're very quickly going to find that there's going to be people with different accents or with different uniforms walking around because they're coming to the, the Air Force's premier training center. But again, it's not just for the Air Force. We'd like to think we're cool and Ross, but the fact of the matter is we are important for everybody. That, Air Force, we are proud of our joint warfighting equation, but again, we're just one part of it. We have the Marines, the Navy, the Army and everybody else. But again, we host that here. Next slide. So Ison Air Force Base. So a lot of you guys are probably very familiar. 2004, they said we're going to get bracked. And you guys said, well, goodbye, Air Force people. We didn't like you that much anyway because we have Nate Sury and his people, who are amazing people. So then what ended up happening next is then they said, okay, we're going to take away the A-10s. Then it became, we're going to do the training and the joke around Ison Air Force Base was fishing was the mission. That was just the, you know, hey, we're kind of quiet, we're sleepy. Then in 2016, the F-35 basing decision occurred which said, hey, we're going to put the F-35 here and then it said, here's the airplanes, you guys got to figure out the rest. Then the Air Force came out and said, by the way, we're not building any more housing on Ison Air Force Base. And then later, now with the recent, with the KC-135 introduction, guess what that means? That means, I guess what, more people are coming. Now we got to start having conversations that were previously verboten. So if you take a look, where's Ison, where has Ison been? If you take a look, it started off with nine tankers. Then we had, then we had F-16s and then we're up to 54, 54 F-35s. Now what's happening, and you probably can't scroll it because it was an animation, but what's happening next in the next three, oh, it's all right, go, go back up real quick. So what's now happening is we are adding four KC-135s by Air Force direction and that's going to go to our guard unit. Again, that starts contributing to 350 people that are service members and civilians as well as our families. And we're also talking about, you guys are familiar with the KC-13, KC-46, which is the next generation tanker. Right now, Ison is the preferred spot for it. If we've got the infrastructure, we've got the runway and we've got the space for it. So naturally, what this basically means is this is all coming to Ison and frankly, from a, you guys are an extremely, extremely lucrative place to be. I think you guys just got graduations. You guys got the Great American Defense Community. Have you guys tracking that? So Fairbanks just got named, talking to Ms. Smart, the, the Great American Defense Community. And that's a designation which is placed on a city as excellence in taking care of your communities. And I can tell you, Colonel Sury and I can tell you that we feel it, we appreciate it and our relationship, it was always, Fairbanks is growing, Ison's kind of growing, but you're going to start seeing a lot more effort from Ison and Wainwright's already been doing it of how we collectively grow together. But it's all because the airplanes are coming, more and more metal and more and more folks are coming. Next slide. So what are our challenges? Here's where we start gently asking for help in the future. And again, we, we're going to need this help. Ison has been fine for years. Ison has been fine for years. So from Ison, one of my biggest challenges as night is as, as the mission support group commander, I'm lucky enough to take care of everybody from civil engineering to cops to contracts to communications, radios, all that good stuff. So we see Ison, while we have airplanes flying out there, Ison is our weapon system. And unfortunately, we're behind. We have a power plant where, that is eking along, it's, it's getting the job done, but we're talking about micro nuclear reactors, which again is a community endeavor. So we're very much involved in that. So bottom line is, we have to be ready to go at 50 below because when, when, when the flag goes up, it, the fact it's too cold or it's too early, it's inconvenient, it doesn't matter. We owe it to our nation, we owe it to all of you to make sure we're ready to go. So that is what I'm focused on. But a big part of getting folks over, over here is, believe it or not, not everybody's cracked the code on how awesome Alaska is. And we've all known folks that have gotten orders to Alaska and unfortunately have either retired, begged, barred and pleaded and did everything they could to not come up here. And unfortunately, part of that is some things that they would change the second they saw it. But they're seeing more and more how we're being embraced by North Pole and Fairbanks and you guys as a community. And we can't thank you enough. That's helping. Quality of life and the desirability, the other thing that's helping us is more and more based on amenities. So we need a bigger commissary, we need bigger, a bowling alley, we need all those things to make people want to come up. That's still helpful as well. Housing, something that I cannot commend your community enough for. Colonel Sury and I get that opportunity to talk to, you know, your local leadership. The housing is going up, they're working on it quite a bit. We know that it's only four months of a good housing season. We know it's expensive. But people are putting a lot of money into making sure there's enough housing, not just for us, not just for the Army, but obviously for the, for the hospital and for University of Alaska of Fairbanks. But we are still going to be part of this and we're still going to build a little bit. But the fact of the matter is, you folks are building. A major part of it though, is the schools. Now, I think we have some folks here who've had kids that have gone to the schools. And again, they've been great. My kid's a sophomore at Ben Ison. However, some of the things that we're going to need help for in the future is, and again, however we get to that solution, we're going to leave it to the board, we're going to leave it to you folks. We're not going to ask for the solution. We know that we're rapid, we are probably going to outgrow what we have. So from the size of the school, we have one school that is probably within 60 people of being a capacity, so we're going to be okay for a little bit. But as the people start trickling in the next two to three years, it's going to be a problem. Staff, we know that's a universal issue, having been with the district and talked to you folks, you know, we don't have enough bus drivers, we don't have enough teachers. And we're working really hard in the legislation to make sure the translation for people that come in with teaching credentials can actually transfer easily. We're not there yet, but we know that challenge is ongoing. We're going to continue to need to help with that. Transportation, awesome that, you know, a lot more routes are coming and we know that it's happening, but the fact of the matter is we still need that because we're 24 miles away. And of course, when we don't have access to, you know, when there's not enough AP classes and everybody's feeling it. It's not just, you know, military kids, I love military kids, but they're kids. We're not special snowflakes. But the reality is, I want parents to want to come here because they know their, their kids are going to get a shot at AP classes, at advanced classes and transportation to North Star, you know, Community College. These are all things we need to get to at some point. And we need to start playing it in right now. And the quality of the school, there's, there's a lot of schools doing, you know, the best they can. I know Ms. La Sage from, from Anderson Crawford's doing the best she can where they have. Mr. Bell, I go to Ben Allison, my son, my son goes by Ben Allison. Lot of great stuff, a lot of dedicated folks. We still have a dirt track as an example, no lights. So things that I want folks to want to come to Ison, I want them to be part of our community. But you know, for us, it's between the integration that's happening, between more, you know, on things that I have to control on base, housing as well as making the schools more desirable and competitive. This is stuff that we're going to start needing help from and we know your budgets are tight. We know everybody wants, you know, wants some money, but the fact of the matter is, we're going to kind of need that and as we grow together, that's going to be a major component for wanting people to come in. And again, there's nothing I'm saying that's meant as a big foam finger of blame saying, you folks have forgotten about us because it was good for quite a while and it was fine. But we see it coming, so we're hoping to start slowly getting ourselves into the mix in terms of, let's start modernizing what we have at Ison, make people want to come. And again, helping us prosper as, you know, North Pole, Fairbanks, Wainwright and Ison. Next slide. So that sounds like a pretty elaborate pitch to ultimately say, guys, we're going to need some help in the future. And we really, really do. But again, we understand that, you know, resources are tight for everybody, but we know the influx is coming. That's not changing. You're not getting rid of us and we are so happy to be here. So again, part of it was, yeah, we're going to need help, but I really felt like talking to the community, you, you really have us. And if I can answer any questions, kind of give you guys caught up in where we're going with Ison, we're not going away. I'm happy to answer questions that if you guys have any. Other than that, I better dismount because I don't want to get on the president's bad side. Because I love her to death. Anyone have questions for me that I can answer, a big picture about Ison?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Matheson?
You did that just to watch me do it next. You did.
You wanted to twirl, I saw it.
Well, you gave him the chance. Thank you. That's, see, that's community cooperation right there. Yes, ma'am.
This is for the public. How can we help the public? So my understanding is that it's very difficult to get on base. I haven't experienced that. I have my CAT card, but there are many people who don't have a CAT card. How can we make it more accessible? So you said that you want people to come to Ison, right?
Yeah, we want our military members that don't want to come from the States to come to Ison. That's, those are the people I need to bring on, bring to the base.
Thank you. That's what I needed to clarify. Okay.
Now, we would love our, you know, we are having an airshow. When we do have opportunities to bring our civilian population and our brothers and sisters in Fairbanks, North Pole, we will gladly do that for sure. But yeah, we need, want people to want to come to Ison from North Dakota or something. No offense to anybody from North Dakota. I probably just lost funding for saying that. Yes, ma'am.
I think you clarified the, the question I had.
Okay.
Is there any questions? All right. Thank you, sir, for your report.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, from Ms. Smith?
Sorry, it's not a question. It's more of, I just really enjoyed your presentation. I really love presentations where you don't have to read off the script and I think you did a really good job of that. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I don't know what anything I said meant, but I hope it was profound. Thank you so much. I appreciate everyone.
All right, I think that brings us back to our unfinished business. And we do have a ruling that you could, Ms. Smith, Mrs. Smith, you, you are correct, you can do that and we'll, so where are we on this, at the vote to? Yes, please.
Thank you. I'd like to move to replace the word bias with facts. After the word opinion, comma, add in identify bias, comma. And also add back the phrase free of partisan, partisanship and censorship.
And you had a second, right?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I speak to my motion?
Please do.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the changes that were made previously and after further contemplation about the exact language. I just feel that it's a disservice to the policy to take out that the purpose of the study of controversial issues is to help students learn how to research, organize and evaluate facts. That I just feel that that's extremely important, that we, we haven't said anything about facts in this policy and bias and facts are not interchangeable words. They are two totally different things, like one is a noun and one is not. And so I just think that I would keep in the important idea of identifying the bias because there's a lot of controversy over biases right now. And so I just feel it's important to have both of those things to organize and evaluate facts, discern between facts and opinion, identify bias and draw informed conclusions. I, I feel strongly about that, those words all being in there, including facts. And then I also feel strongly that our students may have an opportunity to examine such issues in an instructional atmosphere, free of partisanship and censorship. Just, not just in any instructional atmosphere, but in an atmosphere free of partisanship and censorship. It's very important to me.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Ms. Marotti?
Thank you. I want to first thank Borough Attorney Ms. Dolan for helping clarify the parliamentary question tonight. She, without notice, was very generous with her time and knowledge. I also want to point out that where it says organize and evaluate bias, it follows with discern between facts. So the word facts is right after that and, and included. So facts are included in the current policy wording.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett, then Mr. Doran.
I would like to disagree with the free of partisanship phrase. After much consideration and looking into the meanings behind the words, I just kind of have some adverse feelings about adding that line as we are a nonpartisan board and I think that that language will put more behind politics and I really want to keep that out of the school.
Mr. Doran?
Okay. I'd like to move to amend the amendment by striking the words free of partisanship and censorship.
Second.
If I can speak to it.
Speak to it, please.
Okay. Overall, I'm comfortable with the part of the amendment and the changes there. But that phrase, to me, yes, the word partisanship has taken on a lot of political connotation. But if we take it generally, that in a sense, when we talk about controversial issues and different viewpoints, et cetera, you're taking a side. It's by its very nature. So to say you can't have that, then it makes it very confusing. What can we talk about? And then in terms of censorship, we've included and have recognized that the, it's important to have these conversations and to allow students to have these conversations. But it's also within an instructional setting. And so in a sense, if we say free of censorship, then there is no boundaries. And so for both of those reasons, that phrase, I think, is particularly problematic and really would have a greater difficulty in managing these conversations. And in a certain sense, partisanship, being free of partisanship and being free of censorship are contradictory to each other. So that's why my amendment. To the amendment.
Ms. Matheson?
Maybe I'm not understanding what free of partisanship and censorship means. Because my understanding is that free of partisanship is, I don't need to know how a teacher or an instructor is going to vote or what their political stance is or any of that. And that's what I, that's what my understanding that free of partisanship means. Free of censorship, who's censoring? Like, who gets to decide what gets censored and what doesn't get censored? If we allow our teachers, who, we're not putting a boundary on their partisanship or sharing their partisanship, how are we, who's going to decide what gets censored if we don't have this phrase in there? Because I think that there needs to be parameters on, I don't want to know how a teacher's going to vote or how an instructor's going to vote. I don't want to, someone who doesn't have the same ideals that I do to censor my ideals. Does that make sense? So am I incorrect in assuming or understanding that free of partisanship and censorship means that we're, that is the boundary?
I'm going to go to Ms. Hardy because she hasn't been heard from. And then I will do Ms. Marotti and then Ms. Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
So as a teacher certified in the state of Alaska, I can say, like, part of our code of ethics is we're not going to tell you who we vote for. We're not, just like, we've had Ms. Galloway come and say, like, kids guess and they can't predict. And that's part of the code of ethics, which is part of this controversial policy. And then kind of throw back to what we're leaning on, our experts in the field, Ms. Galloway and the teachers at West Valley that teach citizen government. And one of the things they told us for the justification of removing is the phrase free of partisanship is a relatively new term and reflects partisanship due to its connection to these new political tensions. Also, considering the online filter, students are regularly censored in academics, not by the teacher, but by the district, which, having taught at Tannenbaum, you can Google all kinds of stuff and nothing shows up. So we do censor, and that's, that's part of education. And we do it all the time to say, actually, you can't have that piece. I don't know why we're beeping. So those are my take.
Okay, so I think I had.
Oh, Ms. Hardy said exactly what I was going to say.
Okay. Then Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. Can we have our expert staff that wrote this policy? Tell us why they put this in here?
Thank you, Mr. Beam. Could we hear from you?
All right, complete, which phrase are we, we talk about, the partisanship phrase? I got to tell you, that was several months ago. And I don't, I just don't have a lot of detail as far as how we came up with that. I don't, I don't know, honestly.
Can I just follow up with that?
You have a follow-up, Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I appreciate that. And like, I remember we talked about this quite a long time ago. And I guess as the head of teaching and learning and the person who kind of, in the end, is going to be dealing with enforcing this policy to some degree, do you have any opinion on keeping it in or taking it out? Are you neutral? You're neutral?
I would, I would lean towards keeping it in because I think clarity helps. On the flip side, if you guys don't want it in, I just want to get this thing passed so we can have something on the books.
Mrs. Moline?
So I would, I'd like to weigh in on the comment of how it got in there. And as Mr. Beam and Ms. Smith both indicated, there was quite a bit of conversation around it in the policy committee. And it was the policy committee that had this language in there. So this was the work of the committee, which includes teachers, parents, staff. So it was a collective that put that language in there. And like was indicated, it was not just like, well, let's throw it in there. There was a lot of discussion. There was a lot of conversation. And that committee had it in there. So I would agree with Mr. Beam that, my opinion is that it would stay in there because it went through the committee process, and the committee is the one that put it in there.
Mr. Doran?
I'd like to comment on two aspects of it. One is being, having been the chair of the policy committee at the last meeting, they did not approve all the wording. They said move it forward. There was conversation about it, but there was not full agreement on the wording. I did listen to the meeting again prior to last meeting when we brought this up. And so there were things to say, work on it. Nothing was done on that from last April, I believe, or last February to coming, last April to here. So with that said, it was not a clear thing, all of that wording. To the phrase itself, the reference in our conversation tonight has been, in terms of thinking it from the teacher perspective. And it's also applicable to the students. And if we say they have to free, be free of partisanship, we are saying that they cannot speak from a specific perspective or viewpoint. And so that's where I see, this does not add clarity, but it adds great restriction. And that's why I think it's more problematic than it is beneficial to teachers guiding, allowing students to have this conversation, guiding them in a, and we put it the different ways that we want them to have that discourse. So for me, this is a very, very problematic phrase and why I support removing that one.
Ms. Matheson and then Ms. Marotti?
The, okay, I'm going to read the whole thing. The district will provide training for the objective study of controversial issues in order that students may have the opportunity to examine such issues in an instructional atmosphere, free of partisanship and censorship. This is not putting barriers on how a student can debate it. It's just putting barriers on how an instructor can facilitate that debate. That's my understanding when I read it, and that's why I read it out loud. It's not, we're not restricting students from debating or from learning. We're only putting boundaries on how a teacher can express their partisan beliefs.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Marotti?
Through the chair, Mr. Doran, as the chair of the policy committee, can you, at the time this was discussed, can you just clarify for me what you just said about, did you, did you say that the feedback that was given from the committee was not implemented into the policy wording?
What I said and what I said at the last meeting also was that there were lots of suggestions from the committee. They had spent time on multiple meetings going over this. There were things that they thought were not specifically clear. They would have liked to seen different wording. But as a full committee, they did not come to an agreement as to exactly how to reword it. But they said, this is our input, and they voted to move it forward with those comments. So, but the, what came before the board last spring that we voted down at that time was basically the same that came to us recently. Which is now changed.
Are there any new information or comments on this policy? Ms. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. Well, as far as new, I really appreciate Ms. Matheson pointing out and clarifying that this statement is in regards to the training for the teachers and that it's not in regards to the classroom. It's in regards to the training, that they're going to receive research-based training for the objective study of, you know, so that they can provide an atmosphere that is free of partisanship and censorship. I mean, it's important to me to have the teachers trained to provide an open atmosphere for people to talk. I, I'm mind-blown. I'm voting no. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Can I get a clarification on what amendment or amendment to the amendment to the motion that we're in right now? Thank you.
Ms. Richardson, which amendment are we on? Are we back to the original amendment? Okay.
A clarification?
This is an amendment to the amendment. And the motion was to strike free of partisanship and censorship. So it's the amendment to the amendment.
Sorry. Ms. Hardy?
Can I get clarification as to which paragraph?
We're looking at?
No, which paragraph we're adding it to? Because I thought we were adding it to paragraph two, but she's reading paragraph three. So I want to know, so could you read what you want it to read, paragraph three?
Sorry, Ms. Sanderson.
Go right ahead, please.
I just said I would not, I would like to unstrike or remove the strike of the language, free, partisanship, and censorship, from the one, two, third paragraph on my paper. It is in regards to the training.
Ms. Burnett?
Not adding it.
Ms. Burnett?
I would like to.
It has to add.
I would like to thank Ms. Matheson for the clarification. I also thought we were stuck in paragraph two. After clarification, I also will be voting no for this.
Hearing nothing new, we'll call for the vote on the amendment to the amendment. Ms. Richardson? That, the what? That the language is not added back in? Can I have the clarification of the amendment, please?
Okay. A yes vote removes that phrase, free of partisanship and censorship. A no vote keeps it in the amendment.
All right, thank you. Ms. Ms. Richardson, call for the vote, please.
Colonel Suri?
No.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Colonel Alvarado?
No.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
No.
Mrs. Matheson?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
No.
Motion failed.
Now we are back on the amendment? And amendment reads, which word in? Ms. Matheson?
I just have a question about this amendment that Mrs. Smith is proposing. We will still, are we still keeping what Ms. Marotti proposed for the first? Okay, that's what, I just wanted to make sure. All right, I'm good.
Yes. Ms. Ms. Marotti, then Ms. Smith?
Can I get clarification? So the amendment that Mrs. Smith is requesting is to add back facts. So it'll say, and evaluate facts, discern between facts and opinion. So facts twice within just a few words. And then adding back free of partisanship and censorship. And then what was the, through the chair, what was the third change?
Mrs. Smith?
After the word opinion, comma, add in identify bias, comma.
Go right ahead.
So that sentence now will say organize and evaluate facts, discern between facts and opinion, and identify bias?
Into your mic, please.
The rest of it's the same. Okay. So a yes vote adds all three of those back in? Thank you.
I just want to say that I am comfortable and like the first two wordings, the evaluate facts and the identify bias inclusion. But I will vote no on the amendment because I think the third one does add some real contradictory components to this.
Ms. Richardson, would you call for the vote, please? Go ahead, Ms. Richardson. Thank you.
Okay. Colonel Alvarado?
We're confused over here, completely. So can we just read it one more time so we understand what we're voting on?
Okay, yes.
What does yes mean? What does no mean?
Ms. Marotti, would you like to?
Through the chair, I can defer to Ms. Smith since this is her amendment. But if I may say, Ms. Smith, if you could say a yes vote means this and a no vote means this.
Thank you.
Thank you. So a yes vote means that in the second paragraph, there's a lot of lines, right? The one, two, three, four, five, fifth line down, about halfway across is the word bias. I'm changing that word to facts. See how it struck out right before? So we changed that before. That was why we had to wait. Okay? And then after the word opinion on the next line, we're adding another parenthetical phrase, identify bias, comma. And then in the next paragraph, you'll see that is struck through, free of partisanship and censorship. And we're adding that back. We're doing all that.
Ms. Richardson, would you call for the vote?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
No.
Ms. Marotti?
No.
Mr. Doran?
No.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you.
I thought this was the main motion. Okay, so now.
Okay, so now the main motion on the floor is, Mr. Doran?
Okay, and just for clarity, if I might, Ms. Sanderson, is that what we are using is the copy you got tonight, not the one with the crossouts. It has been amended now twice, so it would still be the main motion as amended. But if somebody wants to see all the wording, it's the one you got tonight because that was the one that was actually passed at our last meeting. The one with the crossouts has been gone for two weeks, so.
All right. No further discussion? On? Okay, Ms. Doran, would you clarify?
A yes vote passes the main motion as amended. A no vote, no. You should have gotten a copy tonight.
Are we all on this page now? Thank you. So, Ms. Richardson, would you call for the vote on the original document?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Moratti?
No.
Mr. Doran?
No.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next on the agenda is that consent agenda, but we've approved it. And all the details for each of the items on our consent agenda is listed on our board docs. Next on our agenda is our chief school administration comments and committee reports.
Thank you, President Sanderson. And I would just like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation to our military-committed families and liaisons. It's a true privilege for me to work in this school district and have the kind of partnerships we have with our military, with our military folks. I shared with the DODIA Regional Group an event that happened to me that was so profound example of how I feel about that, about working in this particular district with these particular, with these particular folks. I was coming out of Fred Meyer, and there were jets flying over doing maneuvers. And I thought to myself, "I love living in this community and having the opportunity to serve alongside and with those who serve and protect us as citizens." So this is, it's a resolution that we passed, but it's a way of life and something that we live out every day. So, so thank you to our military-connected families, to our liaisons. It's a privilege to work with Ernest and Janet. I just can't tell you how much I appreciate their involvement and support. And then we can't go without saying an appreciation to Ms. Sangren and all of the support that she gives the district and our military families. So, so thank you all for being here with us and allowing us to serve you as you serve our country.
Thank you, Ms. Moline. For our board comments tonight, we'll start with Colonel Suri.
I appreciate that, Superintendent. It means a lot to us, and thanks for everyone for your support.
Colonel Alvarado?
I do appreciate those comments as well, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to recognize our military kids. But one thing that, one thing that I think is often understated, and we have some folks on the board, you know, obviously our spouses and significant others that actually support. A lot of you folks have had that experience, and you've done it, and we can thank you for it. So while we appreciate, I think the military and the civilian members, we get a lot of appreciation, the kids do. But, you know, my wife has done it for quite a few years. I was an enlisted kid, and I know Mom worked really hard cutting coupons and stuff like that. So thank you to our spouses and significant others that have helped us, helped take care of this nation. So thank you all. Ms. Anderson, that's you too. I know about you.
Fifty-one years of that spouse. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. Well, I guess if everyone's going to talk about that, I will. I was getting my groceries today, and I just thought, "How can I come out here to Ileson, which I live right next to, but don't go there that much, without stopping to see Mr. and Mrs. LaSage at Anderson Crawford and get, you know, how's it going out there?" And it's going great at Anderson Crawford. And they, they seem to have some empty rooms, and Mrs. LaSage assures me that she is ready for some new kids. And she's, they're excited, and I saw Mr. Kincaid when I was there. And I got some Sound of Freedom after I left there. My ears were ringing, but I live at the end of the runway, so that's my everyday life. I also attended the Music in Our Schools Month concert last week. Not the band, but the choir concert, because it was one of Olivia's last concerts. It was fantastic. Seeing the, it was standing room only, bursting at the seams, the lobby full of people who couldn't fit. So it was wonderful to see the support. And then Ms. Anderson and I are heading to Juno on Sunday. And, you know, the governor had a wonderful press release about some education policies that he's putting forward. And I'm really excited to go into Juno in an atmosphere that seems to probably be more welcoming to the conversation about education funding than it's been in a long time. So I'm excited to take our video and take our legislative priorities and run with them in Juno. And then the last thing is that Mr. Doran made me sad because he reminds me that the last time there was a policy committee meeting was all the way last April, I'm the policy committee chair. And I just want the public to know that it's not because I don't want to have a policy meeting. It's just, you know, circumstances well beyond my control. There just hasn't been a meeting, and there was going to be one on the 28th, and we couldn't get a quorum. So I will, and we're going to be rescheduling all the way for April for a nice one-year anniversary of policy. And I'd just like to mention that we have worked on our committees. And having nineteen members is really, makes it hard to go forward. So someday, maybe we'll do something about that. Thank you.
Ms. Matheson?
I was pretty bummed to find out that our concert was canceled today. I'm hoping that we can quickly fix the hearing auditorium. I've been looking forward to these concerts. I'm going to ask the community to participate once we do reschedule the concert. The concerts, that, that the community show up. I think, I think it's awesome that they showed up for choir, so. I also want to encourage everyone, it's going to be that time of year where plays are going to be the focus. So I'm strongly encouraging all of our community members to attend a play at one of the schools. And I feel like this is just going by so quickly. It's almost graduation time, so, you know, I'm looking forward to all of that. Thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
I would like to give a shout out to the Fairbanks Art Association and their partnership with our district in putting on Up with Art, which is going on right now at the Bear Gallery. And you can visit the Bear Gallery and see amazing, like absolutely amazing student artwork right now up on all of their walls, all the way from kindergarten through 12th grade. It's open until the 31st of March, Monday through Saturday, from 12 till 6:00 p.m. I brought my kiddos by today to check it out, and I was lucky enough to be able to judge, which for me was huge because as a student at West Valley, I had pieces entered and thought that that was huge to have my things in the gallery. And now it's only gotten better where younger students are able to be involved. So I encourage the community to check it out. You won't miss it. The metal smithing has truly, I was blown away with the talent our students have. And then also, a couple of us were able to have meetings with representative, or a Zoom meeting with Representative Carrick, Senator Myers, and Representative Stapp. And I thought that went really well. It was with some other members from Galena and Delta. And it was Mr. Doran, Ms. Anderson, and Ms. Moratti and myself having really good conversations. And Juno is ready to listen. I've been listening to all the legislative meetings. I listened to Governor Dunleavy's and also the Senate's and House meetings as they've happened. And I can't encourage our public enough. We have videos, we have other things. Please write your legislator, tell them personal stories of what the school and the programs and the cuts mean to you and your kids. Make it personal because $17 million is no short, you know, small feat. We don't want to cut ELP, we don't want to cut programs. And we need the funding to come in so that we can preserve and hopefully at some point, like Mr. Doran said a lot, invest, which is a kind of something that hasn't happened in Fairbanks in a long time. I was, Senator Myers asked, "Well, what do you mean by educational investment?" And the, you know, the ones I could think of, it was like opening Hutchinson. And that happened shortly after I graduated from West Valley. So those types of things, we haven't been able to do in a very long time.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you for the budget committee met on February 23rd. And we took the opportunity for the members to give us feedback on the proposed budget as stakeholders, both in helping to set the context for the budget and then seeing it put out there. I just want to highlight some of the concerns, and I'll work with Mr. Chukwue, who's also taking notes during that meeting so we can get a report to the board before our next budget work session. But some of the highlights that came out is certainly number of areas that state support. We need to increase funding from the state, from the borough, so we can provide things for students, we can retain staff and attract staff. We've got to pay them to be there. PTR was very high on that list. It was back in the fall when they highlighted some of their things and again came to the fore. ELP, the Excellent Learning Program, cuts came up a number of times as a highlight, library assistance. These are things that impact students directly. And so we really appreciate their involvement with it and their time that evening. A couple of things that I do want to highlight, and partially because of testimony tonight, library assistance, ELP coming right to the fore, CEC coming to the fore. But things that are really impacting students. And I guess one of the things I was thinking about as they were testifying is we have an directed spreadsheet to use from the board to suggest potential ways of balancing the budget differently, what programs might be reconsidered not to be cut, others that may see cuts in order to balance that out. But I would, through the chair, also ask the administration maybe to consider some other options within. I know the best, you gave us the best plan, but I think, you know, as you go through, see whether there are any other areas also as, as board members. We, we try to brainstorm and see what we can do. And again, the board, the budget committee talked some about that add-back list and how important that is because we do really, really hope to see an investment from the, from the state and from the borough. The, the other thing of testimony tonight, absolutely remarkable. We had a tremendous offer for CEC and to help their costs and the perspective that was behind it. I hope that we might be able to put something at rest for CEC, not only for this year, but for the future. I also hope, though, that we, as we consider that offer, we're also cognizant of being a partner and what Food Bank does to support our students. And yes, they are completely volunteer, primarily volunteer organization and dependent on donations. But this is another piece of that partnership that is key. So thank you to Ms. Kirstine for the, for that offer. Finally, I wanted to highlight the movie Till. The NAACP locally and the University of Alaska Fairbanks sponsored a community showing of the movie Till. It's the story of Emmett Till. And when I realized something that I had not registered in my own mind was really how young he was when he was murdered in Mississippi. He was 14. And when I thought back to in the 1950s when he was murdered, he was only a few years older than I was at that particular time. So going back and thinking through that in that time, a powerful story told. And I really appreciate our local organizations to sponsor that showing for the community. It was a free showing, and I would encourage anyone, everyone, to take that opportunity to watch that movie. It's, as I said, it's very powerful. And one of the things that's particularly outstanding for us is that it was directed by a Fairbanks graduate, graduate of West Valley High School, Chaneway Chukwu. And so when we talk about, "Are our schools doing well, are our students doing well?" There is an example of someone who has really made an impact on a very broad community, on a national basis, telling a very important story and getting recognition for that. So again, great thanks to her and the whole team who put that movie together and the stars in it. But thank you for, to NAACP and the university for sponsoring that community showing. And again, I'll just say, take the time, watch Till. It'll have an impact on your life.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Ms. Smith?
Jumping over to me. This is going to sound bad, but I'm kind of glad the concert didn't happen tonight because I really wanted to go to it, and I was really upset by the fact that there was a meeting right now, and I couldn't go to it. I have a lot of friends who are in that concert, and I was really, really looking forward to it. On the Music in Our Schools Month note, there was also the choir concert, and I did that. I think that was the most people I've ever seen in a choir concert. Granted, I've only gone to the North Pole ones, and, you know, we're all the way out in North Pole. Not many people show up to those. But it wasn't just the downstairs. I don't know if you saw that, but it was also upstairs. There were people up there too, and it was packed. It was, it was so cool, just getting to see all of the middle schoolers and the elementary schoolers. It was such a vibrant sound, and it was really amazing to be a part of. And I would really recommend going next year if you can, or even just to the band one if you can too, depending on what date that is. Hopefully not another board meeting day. I just also wanted to say a big thank you to Mr. DeVal for the advocacy video. It was, it turned out really well, it was really fun to do, and I've gotten a lot of compliments on it. It was cool. And then I also wanted to say our Region Six Student Council, they met today during the school day. And we are talking about voting on positions for next year. So that means my position is on its way out and someone else is on their way in, and I'm really excited to see who gets it this year. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Thanks. The FNSB Audit Committee met on the 23rd of this month. We heard from the auditing firm that completed our district audit, and then the committee voted and approved the audits that were completed. I want to thank Mrs. Matheson for a great diversity committee meeting. I heard really good feedback that it was facilitated well, and much appreciation was shared. If the diversity committee can get a quorum, hopefully other committees can as well. I also want to thank the ad hoc committee that has been meeting over the last few weeks with Mr. Minart to go over the contract we will be presenting to the rest of the board soon. We, we had great discussions, not easy discussions at all, but really good thorough ones, and I'm looking forward to the results of that. As a mom of a military kid that is now a pretty awesome adult, I want to thank our military community for the value that they add to our borough. And thank you to Colonel Alvarado for the presentation today. I can't wait to visit both of our bases. It's been since pre-COVID, so I'm, I'm well overdue for a visit to both of our bases. I also want to thank AASB for providing our board an opportunity to speak with several legislators yesterday. Huge thanks to Ms. Anderson, Mr. Doran, Mrs. Hardy, for joining me and providing heartfelt, but also direct testimony about our need for an increased BSA and how their decisions impact our community here. And lastly, I'm not going to cry. I want to thank Sam Kirsten again for the Food Bank's generous, Food Banks generous offer. I'm still in shock and incredibly grateful, and I look forward to hearing about the follow-up conversations that take place. Thanks.
Ms. Burnett?
Try to make this quick. First off, as always, thank you admin for being here, supporting us and everything you guys do. I know it's crazy times right now with our budget. Thank you to our military, Colonel Suri, Colonel Alvarado, thank you so much. Your love and care for our community is very, very apparent, and that means so much that you have invested so much, and we look forward to helping in any way that we can, for sure. Our military community is absolutely amazing. So, I also look forward to coming out to Ileson. I want to, I want some Sound of Freedom in my ears. My husband was one of the lucky contractors that was able to work on the F-35 hangars, so it's amazing to see all the awesomeness that comes out of those aircraft and all the cool people that get to fly them. I've been lucky to meet a few of them. Also, thank you to Mr. Guy out at Wood River. I had a nice visit out there, got to see that amazing school and everything that they are offering there. Legislative committee, as Mrs. Anderson said, I also said on that committee, I'm not able to go this time, but I am setting up Zoom meetings and phone calls with our legislatures and making sure that I communicate with them and do everything I can on my half for advocacy. And I do plan to make a trip out there in April, hopefully set up some meetings with Mr. Ringstad and such. Also, I'd like to thank the admin behind our video, Mr. Duval, Mrs. Herbie, Ms. Smith, Ms. Anderson, our students, everybody who was involved in doing that. I can't say enough how amazing that video was. Mrs. Moline, thank you for taking the vision of the committee and bringing it to them. And I, I really cannot express enough gratitude behind what you guys did in the miracle. That is absolutely amazing. So thank you so much. Also, every Tuesday, I've been lucky enough to join in AASB. They're doing Tuesday noon sessions for new board members, so I've been a part of that, and that's been very amazing. So thank you to AASB. And I would also like to add, Curriculum Committee has met. We are having a public comment period coming up on the 20th through the 24th on our materials, ELA, Health, PE, and Science. The books are currently in the schools, or all of our schools are having the opportunity to go through those. Our amazing teaching and learning department is transporting those, giving our teachers all the ability to give us some feedback. Public comment is coming, and so we would really appreciate anybody who has anything to say. Please come here downtown, the books will be available in teaching and learning. Come, go through them, give us feedback on it. We definitely look forward to that. And last but not least, super sad as well that the concert did not happen tonight, but also grateful considering it was a school board night, and I would just like to back Ms. Smith's comments in that hopefully the next one's not a school board night, because man, I'd love to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. I'd just like to say thank you to Colonel Suri, Colonel Alvarez. I really appreciate the comments to the spouses, because we do help, support, and serve. I cannot tell you the crazy times with the fatigues and the patches and all the crazy scheduling. This has been interesting, raising three students in this. But the thing I love about Alaska is that more military retire here than anywhere else. It's a great community to be a part of, and I guess I must love it. I came from a not warm Tucson desert to be here, so been here almost all 49 years, so. I want to just let our administration and our, the board already knows this, but as I have answered emails that had anything to do with budget, I thought long and hard about how to do this, I basically used it as an avenue to have them partner with us to use their voice to advocate for the funding and whatever their issue was with, with the legislators. So, I basically attached four documents, which I thought long and hard about what that should look like, but they're basically the tools that a person would need to testify electronically, to email their testimony in. I included a contact information of our interior delegation, their email address, their, their Juno address, their, when they're in session and when they're here. And I also attached the board's legislative priorities. So every email that I have answered that had anything to do with the budget, those documents have been attached. And the reason I did that is I asked, I looked at it as an opportunity, first to value what they were asking and telling the board about, but secondly, to not just give them like the pat answer, I'm not very good at doing that. So I always have to think long and hard about how I'm going to answer something. But I did ask at the end, it said something like, and please add your voice to the board's work for advocating for additional funding to support programs like Extended Learning Program that has served students and helped keep their academic success. You can network with other parents to contact legislators in Juno about the budget discussions they are making to fully fund education. I have attached these documents that will help you craft a message so that your voice is heard about the importance of this program. And so, I've kind of attached that to each one of the emails I've been addressing, because I feel that the people who are emailing us are taxpayers, their stakeholders, their staff, and they have, their voice is important to be heard, not only by the board, but by the legislator, because sometimes we tell our story and they get tired of hearing from us. But when a parent, and like in our Zoom meeting the other day, I just expressed that legislators are now hearing from students. They have never probably heard, you know, maybe a student that was getting an award or a student that had done some, you know, outstanding service or award. But now they are hearing from students that are saying things like, the district had to cut this program and it derailed my AP class that I needed for this, or the teacher that I needed my Calculus III class was not, you know, retired or they left the area, and so now I'm looking to take that class by e-learning or pay for it as an extended class through another university or service. All of these decisions that are being made are critical decisions. Every year, this board and others fight to put into perspective a board, a budget that tries to work. We don't like being, cutting programs. We don't like having teachers be displaced, because it displaces the education foundation under our children, and that is not something that we take lightly. And when we have students who come to us and testify and say, you know, I like art, please don't take our art program away. I like music, please don't take our music away. These are not comfortable conversations that this board has had to have, and we still must have, because we have a budget that is due shortly. So I thank the community, I thank all stakeholders for partnering with us, and all of our students across this district that do such phenomenal work to now as your young leaders, even in a more powerful way than you probably never saw yourself before. But we see you, we hear you, and we thank you. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
We are adjourned. Thank you.